Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. On this Tuesday, December 26, 2023, can I get a motion to approve our agenda? I am going to, on the consent, I'd like to take item nine and move that to our regular agenda.
And move it where, Madam Chair?
Just to our regular agenda.
With that request, I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion in a second. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then on the consent agenda, with that change that we made, is there anything else that anybody wants removed from consent agenda? Anything from the commission? Okay, anything from the public? All right. If not, then can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved to approve.
I've got a motion from Aaron's, second from Schmidt. If there's no further discussion, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to regular business. First, we have board action regarding an application for county aid lien compromise.
Good morning. Sheri Lynn, Lincoln County Auditor. We received an application to compromise a county aid lien. I'm not sure if the applicant's present. But in reviewing her account, we realized that there was a double billing on there, so I would like to have the board authorize us removing 4850 from the county aid lien without any other action from her. Then she'll have to, if she's here, she can speak on the other.
All right. So we've heard the request. Is there any discussion? All right. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, can I get a motion, please?
Is the applicant here?
That's why we'll probably not hear the second part of the compromise.
Okay, I'm just wondering if they are here, though.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, very good. I'll offer a motion to make that change.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. If not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Next item, we have a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning that's one, two, and three, Nine Mile View Edition, Northeast Quarter, Section Four, Township 99 North, Range 49 West, from the Avon Agricultural District and the RC Recreation Conservation District to the Rural Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommendation for approval failed, zero, two, five. And I don't see Toby, so... What's that? Well, I just did it, so we'll just keep going. All right. Move on to item three on the agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Terry Floyd, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. First action I have for you this morning is board action for the approval of a joint powers and funding agreement with South Dakota DOT for replacement of Structure 42-120-158. This structure is located on County Road 125, about two and a half miles south of Highway 18. This structure was awarded to us. We applied for a replacement grant on this through the state federal grant back in July, August, August. We were awarded a grant for this, so this is the agreement for that grant to be in place. As per the agreement on this, this is 100% paid for under the grant, so there should be no cost to the county on this, on this structure.
All right, thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? All right. With that, is there a motion?
Also move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any discussion amongst the commission?
Madam Chair, quick question, too. Will that get completed in '24, then?
Oh, no. This is probably, they're probably giving us three years on this. So it may be a little quicker, Commissioner Poppins, just for the fact that we were completed with a preliminary engineering on it, so we are ready to go into design on this. So basically, they should be able to skip probably about six months' worth of work, but again, these might be something that they will bundle, just like they did on their past federal grants. They try to bundle several structures that are close in vicinity to get a better price, so.
Very good. Thank you, Terry.
All right. Anybody else? All right, we call the roll, Kristen?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have for you, board action for the approval of a joint powers and funding agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation for the removal of Structure 42-010-265. This structure is located on, it's on a township road, it's 465th Avenue, about a half a mile south of County Road 152, so it's in the very southwest part of the county down there. This structure has been closed for 15-plus years, and the road is a Brooklyn Township road, and it is a minimum maintenance road. Nobody lives on this mile, so this thing is still on our inventory. So basically, we're gonna, we, as a part of the 23 state federal grant process, they had removals again, and this is 100% paid for. We're gonna be removing the structure, and nothing will go back in it, so.
All right. Any public comment on this agenda item? All right, Commissioners?
Is it, who removes it, then, Terry?
What's that?
Who removes it, then?
So the DOT will go, I think they have six or eight different removals on this round of grant applications. So basically, they're gonna take and do engineering and everything on these structures, all eight of these statewide, whoever got grant, removal grants, and then they bid that as one project, and then it gets removed. So that one might take place maybe in a year, year and a half. Depends on how long it takes them to get engineering done, so. So it will be bid out through the DOT.
All right, can I get a motion, please?
Also move. Second.
Got a motion from Gibbon, second from Poppins. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have for you is board action to approve the deletion of Structure 42-001-220. This structure is located on 290th Street, about a half a mile east of 464th, the county line. This is a Delaware structure, Delaware Township Road that this structure is on. This has been a long time in the works. If you read through the information that I attached, we deleted this structure because we thought we were gonna be able to delete this off of our inventory back in '19, but it turns out Delaware Township didn't file all the proper paperwork to vacate the road, so they did it again, while it was not done properly again. Fast forward to now, they just did it again this year. All the paperwork is in, so I submitted everything to the DOT, and we were gonna remove this off of our inventory. So basically, about a year and a half ago, we had sent out letters to landowners. The bridge is gonna go back to the landowners. We vacated the structure, so each landowner, each side of the road is gonna have half ownership in this structure. Leo Council sent out letters to them, like I said, it's been about a year and a half ago, and they were supposed to contact us. If they had an issue, they did not, so we are proceeding to remove this structure off inventory, so.
All right, thank you for that, Terry. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Got a motion to approve, second from Poppins. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, Terry?
Next item I have is board action to give me permission or authorization to apply for bridge improvement grants. These structures are listed in the... They are listed, what item is this? This doesn't...
It's item six on our regular agenda.
All right. These are replacements and preservations that we're gonna be doing. This looks... 244, 255 should not be on there on this. Let me look through this. We go down here. These are the structures that we're gonna be applying for. We're applying for three replacement grants, and those are for 42-120-283, it's located on County Road 125, 42-200-226, located on County Road 139, 42-200-249, also located on County Road 139. Other grants we're gonna be applying for as well are gonna be preservation grants. This is gonna be for 42-175-153. This is on County Road 135, which is the Beloit Bridge. And the next, the last one is a preservation as well, it's 42-020-201. This is located on County Road 105. So just a little bit of information on the Beloit Bridge. This summer, we had to do an emergency repair on that. If you recall, I came to you this summer, and we had to do some joint repair on the ends of, end of the bridges. So now we're getting in the process, we're gonna apply for a preservation grant for this. The Structure 020-201, which is on County Road 105, earlier this year, so this is a long process. We were awarded a grant for this in 2019, I believe. Well, we went to bid it early last year, and the project cost was about $700,000 above what we had expended, or we had budgeted. So basically, this summer, we relinquished the grant on this, and now we're gonna reapply at the higher value for today's cost. So those are the structures. Again, all these are gonna be at a 20% match on this, on these applications.
All right, thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, Commissioners?
Moved to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, next item, Terry?
Next item I have is board action to approve and authorize the chair to terminate an agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. In the resolution there, you'll see all the pertinent information, the PCN number 09GG for Structure 42-244-255. This structure is the Hudson Bridge. We were awarded a preservation grant for this structure earlier this year, but we started working on design on it. DOT got involved, and they wanted to go more in-depth. The scope of the work has changed on this project. They're feeling that we need to do more work, which has increased the cost of this project by over $400,000. So what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna relinquish this grant that we already have in place, and again, I don't have the actual award or the letter from the DOT to terminate this agreement, but it will come sometime in middle of January. But in order for us to reapply for this grant, which is due January 2 of '24, they want this done in place of that, and we can attach this with our new grant application for that structure. Any questions on that?
Does the board have any questions? All right. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, we call the, oh, I need a motion for...
Also move.
Second.
I've got a motion by Gibbon, a second by Aaron's. Kristen, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next one, Terry?
Next item is, so this is gonna be the board action to approve and execute a preservation grant application for that same structure, 42-224, or 244-255, through the Department of Transportation. And again, on this, on this grant application, it's gonna be a 20% match.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Terry?
Moved to approve.
Is there any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, then you've got, I've got a motion from...
Second.
Poppins, and a second from Aaron's. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next item, next item I have, board action to approve and award a bid to custom truck and equipment in the amount of $110,290 for a service body for the new sign truck we have. Again, earlier this year, we went to bid for a chassis, a one-ton chassis, or a heavy-duty truck chassis, to put a service body on, and we, we were awarded, we awarded a bid, and we purchased this unit in July, I believe, of this year, and it's a 23 Chevy 650. So that's what this service body will be going on. We'd be mounted on that, so.
Commissioners, have any questions for Terry? All right. Any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, can I get a motion, please?
So...
No move, Madam Chair.
Second.
I've got a motion from Schmidt, second from Aaron's. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Next item on our agenda? Tracy, are you on the phone?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, can you guys all hear me?
You could maybe speak up a little bit louder.
Absolutely. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right. Tracy Humphrey, Lincoln County HR Director. This agenda item this morning, as attached, there's a briefing form. We are requesting for the board to change the employee evaluation process. I'll let the IT department pull that up, thank you. Over the last 14 months, HR has collaborated with the commission office and department heads to learn more about our employee evaluation process. So as it states here, every October through November, the county, excluding unionized staff, conduct annual performance evaluations, and during this time, we're reflecting our performance and meeting with supervisors to receive a formal review. And during that time, the supervisor points out opportunities for growth as well as praising the employees, and all employees participate as long as they're hired by the end of August. Over these past 14 months, HR has sought feedback from county leadership about this process, and the feedback has been that the rush to complete these employee evaluations all at the same time, because some departments have 20 people, it's a busy time of year, and it leads to less productive and constructive reviews. So what I'm bringing to the board today is to follow best practices. We are requesting that the board modify the performance evaluation process to occur during the month of the employee's anniversary, rather than at the end of the year. Under the Fraternal Order of Police, they have been conducting performance evaluations tied to their anniversary date, and have had positive feedback on that. This change would allow our leadership to provide focused feedback and allow the county to continue to follow best practices for employee retention. However, to do this, a positive employee review does result in a step increase, which is a movement up in their salary, and so in addition to being able to modify the performance evaluation to move from a end-of-year to an anniversary date, we are requesting for the commission to approve a one-time additional step for employees in 2024, obviously dependent on whether or not the employee receives a positive performance evaluation. I can go further into the details of how that would work, and that's my last paragraph there, but I do wanna note that the cost to the county for this, our steps are 2.5% whenever an employee moves up, but because this would be a staggered adjustment throughout the entire year of 2024, we're looking at a 1.7% salary increase or the equivalent of about $107,000. Again, that's just assuming, but all staff would qualify for a full step, but that is the step process. As I have noted in the attachment, is dependent on their performance and whether or not they get a step.
All right, I'm gonna have questions for Tracy.
Madam Chair, a little concerned about the cost implications of making a change like this. I think that wouldn't have been pertinent when we were making discussions on wages and salary adjustments for the upcoming year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If it would be appropriate for me to respond, Commissioner Poppins, one of the things that came up sort of after our budget season was that our cost savings from our health insurance, so we had had a budgeted 12% cost to the county, but when our insurance company came back, it ended up only being a 3% cost of increase. So it allowed us to about $100,000 difference between what was budgeted versus what, what we actually are gonna have to spend on health insurance.
Thank you, Tracy. I was aware of those, I was not aware of this 1.7s until today, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions for Tracy?
So are department heads doing these evaluations?
Yes, the department head, or if there's times where a direct supervisor is the more appropriate person to do so, then a direct supervisor along with a department head would do that evaluation.
And then that would mean the same for us as well, correct? That we would do department head reviews tied to their anniversary date?
Correct. The, we're requesting for all of the employees besides unionized staff to be included in this proposal. The Fraternal Order of Police are already a part of an anniversary date, whereas the Highway Department, we're under discussions with them for their annual contract, and they have declined to participate if the county does switch to employee anniversary date rather than annual.
So if someone doesn't meet performance objectives, is there a timeline when they have to be notified? Is that spelled out?
Certainly, yes. So they have a, when they do their performance evaluation, at that time, if they are not considered eligible for their step, the department head would work with HR to create a work improvement plan, where we give the employee, depending on the issue, anywhere from six weeks to six months to improve in a specific area, and then during that time, the supervisor gives feedback and ensures that that employee is moving along in their performance and meeting expectations. At the end of that work improvement plan, if the employee is, has improved, then they would then have that positive evaluation and a step increase, and if they are not, are continuing to not meet expectations, then they would have a corrective action that may include a written warning or termination, just depending on the situation.
So these evaluations would be spread out over the year?
Correct, yes. So right now, we do all, we have 110 employees that we do between October and November, and instead, we would move those to be throughout the entire year. So it's about 15 to 20 a month. So for a department, they could have one each month, or they may not have any, and that's sort of the goal for best practices, is to be able to have that focused time with our employees and the department head not being able to ensure that everyone's meeting standards.
And department heads are supportive of this?
Yes, overall, every department head. There's a couple that have some concerns that they have such a large department that they'll have to do one every month, but they're in agreement that it will result in better performance evaluations.
Commissioners, any other questions? All right. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd move for approval.
Thank you. Got a motion, is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll offer a second for discussion, although I feel I will not be supporting the motion.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I do like the idea. I do think it's pertinent, though, that we have that discussion in a timely manner when we're looking at wages and salary adjustments, the impact to the budget at this point, although can be absorbed because of a lesser amount in insurance, I think it's pertinent that we delay this for one year, but that's my only thoughts. Thank you.
All right. Any other Commissioners' comments?
Madam Chair, I like the policy. I like the fact that it's being codified so that all of our employees know what's expected of them, as well as department heads. They know how to properly evaluate their employees as well according to a new policy. I also like the idea of tagging in advance in salary or financial benefits to potent, or promotion potential as well. I think that incentivizes our workforce. You know, it gives them a lot of incentive, I think, in order to do what's expected of them by, by their supervisor. Similar to Commissioner Poppins, though, I do have some concerns about the cost. I wish that would have been, wish the financial impact to the county would have been discussed more and probably better vetted. I probably disagree with Commissioner Poppins, though, about needing to take a whole year to do this, but it would have been nice to know what the financial impact is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners have comments? All right. If not, then Kristen, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
No.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, next item, Tracy?
Thank you, Commissioners. This next proposal is just to create a better practice going forward of putting the pay matrix in the pay grade listing for your review and approval. There is no modifications to the pay matrix you guys did during the budget hearings, have a 3% COLA listed, so this is, the attachments are just showing the new pay matrix reflective of that 3% COLA, and then this is, yeah, the pay grade listing is all of the positions within Lincoln County, so it's stating what the position is, what the department is, whether it's exempt, and then also its pay grade. This is just to have it on record for the public and then also for your formal review. Again, this percentage was already approved through the budget hearings, but wanna bring it to your formal attention.
Thank you for that. Commissioners, any questions for Tracy? All right. If not, any public input on this agenda item? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
It's a motion to approve, I'm assuming?
Motion.
Thank you.
Sorry, motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
I've got a motion from Aaron's, a second from Gibbon. Kristen, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you again. So the last item that I have is board discussion and action to formally approve the elected officials' compensation. So per codified law, we bring this to you all at the end of the year to set their elected official salaries, besides the commission, that we bring those in January, but these are the elected official salaries that we bring in for you for approval. So below that first section there is the salaries that were approved during the 2024 budget process. These had a 5.5% increase from 23 to 24, which was reflective of the staff's other improved increases of 3% and a step of 2.5. Given our proposal for the change in performance evaluation and that moving from end of year to anniversary, we have the option for you also, if you want to mirror the elected officials for the rest of the employees, to have that additional 2.5%. So the, the two different options is to reflect, is the first one is what was already approved in the budget process, so the state's attorney, down to the register of deeds. in the budget process, so the state's attorney, down to the register of deeds. And then the second option on the bottom is if you want to approve an additional 2.5% for the elected officials due to the performance evaluation change that we had, keeping in mind that they are not participating in that evaluation. So that's typically why we just give them a flat percentage increase, to just ensure that there's not wage compression within the department, as well as staying competitive.
Anybody have questions for Tracy? All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I just have a question for Tracy.
Go ahead.
Tracy, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
So, just to clarify, I know you said it, but I want to make sure we've got this correct. We're not really giving them a step increase. Instead, what we're doing, even though you call it a step increase, is it's in order to prevent wage compression. That's what the 2.5% is on top of the 3% COLA?
Correct, yes. So we, you know, since they have their deputies in their departments that are often making fairly similar wages, we do, we typically, in years past, give them whatever the full amount percentages that's given to staff is what we would give them. So we looked at, we budgeted a 5.5% increase for elected officials, and then I also have the option, if you want, to make that an 8% increase to reflect the rest of the employees.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm looking for a motion.
Commissioner, oh, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead.
Was there a motion made?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'm looking for one, though.
Madam Chair, I'll offer that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. I've got a motion from Commissioner Schmidt, and that's a motion to approve, correct?
For which one?
Commissioner Landine? Item 12.
No, I know, but the first part or the additional 2.5? There's two options there.
Yeah, that's what was my question, I wanted to ask.
Jim, can you clarify your motion?
I'm looking at, at it, and are we talking about the top half? I'm looking at the tax embedding for state's attorney, sheriff, or treasurer, register of deeds.
Well, you can do, yeah, you can do the top one, or you can do the bottom one.
Well, I, I will vote for the bottom one.
Okay.
With the, yes, performance evaluation and steps, which shows an increase.
Which shows, yep, which shows the additional 2.5%.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll offer a second, Madam Chair.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion amongst the commissioners?
Unfortunately, I will have to be supporting this, just so you avoid compression within the departments. But again, I think we could have waited, maybe not a whole year, for the discussion, but implemented this at the same time next year. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion amongst the commission?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll be supporting it for a similar reason. I want to avoid compression within the departments. I do appreciate the fact how the staff and the elected officials and Tracy went about calculating this. I do think it's important with regard to county elected officials, where you have a county commission deciding other elected officials' salaries, that we do so without regard to how we perceive their position on issues, or their public comments, or any kind of performance issues to that extent. Because I think it's important for people in South Dakota to have confidence in their elected officials, as well as their county commissions, that regardless of whatever policy issue an elected official may take, and whether I agree with that or not, I think that elected officials should be compensated fairly and without bias or prejudice. I think that's the best way to avoid cronyism in government, is to make sure that elected officials, whether I, whether they got a D or R behind their name, or whether they decide one issue one way or another issue another way, is that their compensation is, is set effectively without any kind of prejudice or bias. So for that reason, I appreciate the fact how the commission went about this, and I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other discussion amongst the commission? All right, if not, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
No.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, next.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Sherry, you up?
All right, so since we are at the last meeting of the year, we got to do the budget cleanups. So what I'm requesting is for the 2023 contingency transfers, we would need to do 88,000 to 1817 to the judicial, 101-4130-422100. We do 23,934 to insurance, 101-4167-421000. 8193 to floodplain management, 101-4223-422500. 948906 to mental illness, 101-441-429200. And then 45,000 to the airport, 236-4331-37100. During the budget process, the board did set the contingency at 230,000. The proposed transfers are 166,72316. I've listed the reasons for them. You know, the judicial, we had additional contracts. The insurance, we had increased premiums. Floodplain management had a post-budget directive from the commission. Mental illness, you know, that was kind of a hard one to budget regardless, but we had 9,48906 more in billings than we had budgeted for. We did have recoveries, though, which means we billed other counties or the state for 18,000. And the airport, we're still just cleaning up for the airport hiring of the manager.
All right, anybody have questions for Sherry? All right, any public input on this agenda item?
So the, excuse me.
Yep, go ahead.
The, the airport manager's salary was not in the original budget?
It was not. Nope, and this, this.
I guess I thought it was, but.
So this transfer that we're doing here is, it's to increase the budgeted cash. That's the line item that it's going to. So I need to send more cash over, which will be in the next resolution, because of the hiring of the airport manager, because of some of the things that he's done out there and things like that. So that's, it's for budget, the line item is budgeted cash.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, and then was there any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, if not, can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So my next item, then, is to do the budgeted cash transfer from the general fund. We do need to do a cash transfer to the highway fund in the amount of $3 million, and the, and these are budgeted, and the airport fund in the amount of 90,000.
All right, anybody have questions for Sherry? All right, if not, is there any public input on this agenda item? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'll offer the motion, Madam Chair.
That's a motion to complete the cash transfer?
Yes.
Got a motion to complete the cash transfer? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, Sherry?
All right, then I believe my last item is to assign the general fund cash. We had a conversation earlier regarding the general fund cash that needed to be assigned to, for the codified law, 72118.1. You'll see my resolution where I have, where I think the best assignment of the funds would be. They would be for the subsequent year budget. That's the cash applied that we've already set for this, next year's budget, for road purposes. We are looking at, or we're talking about doing a different way of budgeting for the highway department, so that would be set aside for basically the cash transfers. It would be 25. And then the ARPA expenditures, those are the new hire monies that we have set aside for the new positions that we've been doing every quarter. And then for building purposes, $2 million.
All right, anybody have questions for Sherry about that?
Sherry, just because we assign it now, doesn't mean we can't change it later, right?
That's correct. It's a board action to assign and a board action to change it.
And this just makes us compliance with state law?
That's correct.
Okay, so if, if we want to increase or decrease the road budget for, based upon, for whatever reason, but maybe based upon new information or something like that, we can do that later on in the budget process, right?
Yeah, so if you had, for the $3 million in the road purposes, if you thought, well, we only maybe need a million, and want to move the other two to building purposes, we just have to have that amount of cash allocated as assigned.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sherry? Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, Kristen, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, next item. Somebody presenting? Oh, hey, John, I didn't see you sitting over there.
Sorry. John Robbo, Building Superintendent. Yeah, so I had in my 2024 budget, $10,000 earmarked for snowplow for the new pickup that was just authorized for purchase. And as I was reaching out for quotes, my lowest bid came in just a little over that $10,000. The lowest bid was Christensen Radiator and Repair for $10,480.40. So I'm here to request permission to go over that $10,000 authorization.
All right, anybody have questions for John? Okay, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, can I get a motion?
Oh, Madam Chair, move to approve.
All right, I've got a motion from Schmidt and a second from Commissioner Poppins, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yep, can you make sure your microphones are on?
Yep, sorry about that, Madam Chair.
That's all right. We call the roll, please?
But, Madam Chair, can I just ask a quick question?
Uh, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Are we going to surplus the old Dodge 2500 and the old snowplow? Are we going to?
That is the plan, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I might, you know, I might keep it for a month, maybe, but I'll, it'll eventually get surplus fairly soon, but.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
All right, I've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All right, Kristen, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Next item. The building demolition services award. Who's handling that?
We request an executive session.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, under what section?
Under what section? Would be under subsec, oh, excuse me, be under subsection three.
Do we need executive session for anything else?
Yes, we'd need executive session for two more items.
Madam Chair, I'll move we go into executive session under sub one, sub three, sub four.
All right, I've got a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
I'll also move.
All right, I've got a motion and a second for executive session. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries will be in executive session.
Second.
All right, we call the roll, Kristen?
Commissioner Erins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Landine?
Yes. I want to find out what's going on with Jim, so he can be on for these next agenda items, so. While we see if we can get him back on?
I can hear you, Madam Chair.
Ah, all right, glad you're back with us. We're out of executive session, so we'll take up item 17 on our agenda.
Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office. The county had put out a request for proposal to demolish the old county jail, the old 4-H buildings, as well as a building out by the airport. We had six responsive offers. Under the RFP process, the county may select the, the offer that's the most, provides the most advantage to the county. Staff's recommendation on the Smiths would be to award the RFP to Spielman Excavating. The total cost of the project under the RFP would be 139,800. That is budgeted in next year's budget.
All right, and that, that was, which one?
Spielman Excavating LLC.
And that was based on the bid packages that they put?
Correct.
The full bid packages?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Drew? All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, you've heard the request. Can I get a motion to award the bid package?
Madam Chair.
All right, Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to go Spielman Excavation based on recommendations from staff.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Kristen, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, that motion carries. Now move on to item 18 on our agenda. Who wants to tee that off?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the time the commission makes to hear this issue this morning. So both myself and Commissioner Gibbon have put this agenda item on the, for commission discussion this morning. Essentially, what the motion would be here this morning is to authorize the State's Attorney's Office to file an amicus brief with the court, supporting the landowner plaintiff's legal position and asserting the county's interest. And I'll just give some further definition to that motion and that request. So the landowner's contention is essentially that the state should not be able to have immunity from the county zoning laws, and that the state should have to come in front of the, the county commission here and/or planning and zoning to seek a conditional use permit for citing of the proposed correctional facility. And then further, I believe that the county has an interest in this because we're certainly very interested from a county perspective in trying to understand how the area would be developed and zoned if the state were to get their way. So clearly, we have some planning and zoning issues, or planning and zoning concerns, as to what may pop up if the state were allowed to build the prison without permission from the county, or without seeking a conditional use permit from the county. Certainly, there'd be a lot of infrastructure out there, and that infrastructure may bring a certain type of growth that we have not planned for. Typically, you'll see correctional facilities cited in areas Typically, you'll see correctional facilities cited in areas that are more appropriate for industrial-type zoning as opposed to where we've seen it here. Without getting into the merits of the location, I do think it's appropriate from a policy perspective on the part of the county commission here, given the fact that the proposed correctional facility is completely inconsistent with our comprehensive plan. And because it is inconsistent with our current comprehensive plan, I think it's important that the county gets on record and files notice with the court what are, what we believe the current policy should be. Now, just to give a little further definition, maybe for the audience and those listening in the general public, I'll just get into the weeds a little bit here with the legal issue. But essentially, what the landowners are asking for is that the court adopt the balancing of interest test. This is important because counties around the nation, not just this county here, have been faced with this issue previously. You know, there's other counties and other states over the last several decades that have had to deal with a state wanting to come into a county and put a facility there or a use there that was inconsistent with their comprehensive plan. And so states, or, excuse me, counties and landowners have been in litigation with, with states around the country. And typically, at least in the last several decades, what the courts have adopted is what's called the balancing of interest test. And they'll try to ascertain from what the state is wanting to do, whether the state should be stripped of its immunity from the county zoning laws and be subject to having, having to file an application with the county as opposed to just being able to Bigfoot the county, come in, locate the use, and then, you know, the locals end up having to just deal with it, so to speak. And I don't think that's a very effective way of going about this kind of process. You know, we only do this every 150 years in South Dakota. Never had to build a prison of this magnitude since the inception of statehood. So certainly, this is, is a use that's inconsistent with the current thing, what's currently planned out there in an agricultural area with just a lot of acreages. There is precedent on this commission for at least wanting to discuss these issues. Myself and Commissioner Gibbon previously brought this issue up with Spring Creek. At, what happened out there is the state wanted to locate a campground next to the neighbors' houses. And while this commission ultimately voted not to send a resolution to the legislature, there were several comments from the commissioners urging and encouraging the neighborhood to work with the state. This time around, I think it's important that the county protect its comprehensive plan and we certainly have some equities to defend. You know, what would the area look like after a prison is built if the state would win the lawsuit or if they would be allowed to move forward? So certainly, the county has a dog in the fight, is what I'm trying to say. And there's issues that we need to sort out. But it's not just the, this motion today or this policy statement wouldn't just say that the court should adopt the balancing of interest test. What it also says, puts this commission on record as saying and filing with the court, is that not only should the, should the judge weigh the interest, but the judge should weigh the interest in favor of the landowners and the county. So I think that's also an important issue here. And when I say in favor of the landowners and the county, what I ultimately mean by that is the state should have to come before this commission or before, excuse me, before planning and zoning and probably in front of the commission with regard to its application for a conditional use permit. So that's what I think we should put forward as a policy. And then I think we should authorize our state's attorney to communicate that policy preference to the court. So that's my motion today, Madam Chair. And I thank you for the time.
Thank you. So I just need some clarification first, and then I've got a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if you will know the answers or not, but who, who is this group, NOPE? Who are the officers and directors? Or how many people are we talking about as far as the actual? It says it's an incorporation. It's incorporated. So is it in fact incorporated? What type of corporation is it? And who are we talking about here?
So I think some of their members are here today, and certainly when this issue comes up for public comment on this issue, I encourage those committee members to stand up and recognize yourself.
Yeah, I'm wanting to know who the officers and directors are. I'm not talking about the membership right now.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I mean the member, I mean who the directors are. So they're, they're here in attendance today and they can identify themselves.
Okay.
But, but for further clarification, as I put in the motion, their names are on file in the lawsuit.
And are they in fact incorporated and registered as a corporation?
I believe they're an unincorporated association. No, they are incorporated. Okay, I'm receiving the North South from, from State's Attorney's Office. They are in fact incorporated.
So is NOPE a DBA or what is it? I don't know.
Is it a nonprofit corporation? Yeah, okay.
I can answer that question real quickly, I guess.
Thank you.
It's a nonprofit organization. The officers are designated as Mike Hoffman, Thomas Eslin, Jay White, Michelle Jensen, and Reed Van Der Veen.
So five?
Five.
Five, okay, thank you. So you want us to actually go on record and support all of the landowners, these five officers and directors in the membership?
Yes, Madam Chair, I want to support their legal position. That's stated in their, in their complaint.
Do, how many members are part of NOPE? And I'm not talking about Facebook followers. Do you know the answer to that?
I don't know, Madam Chair. I would say this, myself and Commissioner Gibbon went to an initial meeting several weeks ago, pretty large turnout. I don't know whether they consider themselves members or not. Obviously, they were affected individuals. And then last week, myself and Commissioner Poppins were at a meeting of their event, and there was probably, what, 150 people there, maybe? 200? So I would say that, you know, whether they have membership policy or not, I think is probably irrelevant to the issue of whether we file an amicus brief. But I do appreciate the questions. I think they are important.
I guess, my take on it right now is that should we come back down the road, I'm trying to be not shortsighted about this, and we sit on a conditional use permit having to do with this prison? I think we, arguably anyway, we're probably putting ourselves in a position of having to conflict off if we take a strong position and stop acting like the judges that we may or may not have to be in the future. So that's why I'm having a pretty big problem, you know, getting them on board with us. I'm not happy about what the state did either. But at some point, if this comes back in front of us, I think if we had taken a position one way or the other, that that may throw another cog or wrench into our abilities. So I'm not going to be supporting this today for that reason. And that reason, I mean, the other, I guess, one of the other things is this group has a GoFundMe page and trying to raise $200,000. So I'm having a hard time justifying, in my mind, paying and using taxpayer money to support, you know, this smaller group. All of the taxpayers in the county pay taxes and are affected by this. So that's, that's something else. I mean, I don't, I don't feel like the county should be doing all the legal work behind the scenes for this group and putting those costs on the taxpayer. So those are just my initial thoughts, but I'm not going to be supporting this today.
No, Madam Chair, I, I think those are very fair comments and I respect them. My response would be the following. The disqualification issue is very important. Commissioner Poppins and myself explained the other night at the NOPE meeting that, how the process works. When an applicant comes in front of the Planning and Zoning Committee, and if it would come in front of the commission, we have to wear our judge hat. And that means we can't prejudge the issue. We can't say we think one site is better than the other because that would disqualify us and, and we'd essentially be abdicating our duties as commissioners. However, we're not at that point yet because there is no pending application. So there is no application to opine on. And number two, I'll just make it very clear here, and I made it clear at the meeting, that we would be reserving, at least I will, be reserving comment on the site selection that was made by the state in order to prevent any kind of disqualification motion from the state. Because I think these people in front of us here probably want someone like myself to be able to make that decision. But I do not want to have myself disqualified either. So I think this is consistent with the Dick Kelly case that was in front of the Supreme Court, though. Number two, with regard to the legal work, counties, and this is more so for the public, I know that the chair knows this. There's a Supreme Court decision that says counties don't have standing to file declaratory judgment actions against the state. So there is no way in order for Lincoln County to be able to put itself in front of the court to make a decision like this, other than through an amicus brief. So we do have the legal ability to ask the judge to allow us to file an amicus brief. And so that, so number one, we'd be prevented from spending any taxpayer money litigating this case on behalf of those folks who are in front of us here. But we would be allowed to file a friend of the court brief. And that's, I think, consistent with our duties as a commission in terms of defending our county comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I don't know. Do you have a second yet?
I don't have a second yet.
I'll offer the second so I can have a discussion.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question, I think, for Commissioner Aaron's or Commissioner, or Chairman Landine. The lawsuit that's presented to the, the courts, is it merely stating that it should come? They're requesting that the, the action by the state actually just come in front of the county? It's not actually saying that they're, they're saying that it should not be built, it's just saying it should come in front of the county? Am I correct in that?
Right. Oh, go ahead, Drew. My understanding right now, and it's been a while since I read it, but the original briefs were whether the complaint was sufficient, addressing issues of sovereign immunity. I don't know that it went directly to the, to the item. The substantive determination that they want to be made. I think there's just some initial challenges being made. And Drew, you can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but.
The reason I ask that, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Aaron's, is, as I have stated to the group, when I have been in front of them, I believe that the state should not be immune from having to abide by local planning and zoning rules, especially for something as impactful as this that is being proposed. But again, I have to clarify, we have yet to see anything from the state, so I don't even know if they're referring to putting a chicken coop up or what they're planning on doing. And the mere fact is, I would feel imperative that if ground was to break, or if they were to break ground on something and not have something in front of us, it would be imperative for us to, to request what it is and then make a decision if we think at that point. So if this defers later expenditures of the county to fight something, I think it's pertinent to tackle it ahead of the game versus after the game, Madam Chair, so.
Yeah, I, you know, just when the Senate, when the Senate passed the House Bill 1017 to purchase property for a prison, and some of our, our Lincoln County legislators voted to allow that, and they didn't put any conditions on there that, you know, they needed to work with, you know, the county or township or wherever the site would be. So I don't know if, yeah, I mean, we had legislators that voted for it, so. I'm not even going to be supporting this today.
But hopefully, by doing this, we'll be able to get some answers.
I don't think this is the part where we get the answers. This is just whether they're rightfully in court. If this is something that can be looked at, the state's, you know, arguing sovereign immunity and some of those initial challenges that need to be made. So I, I don't, if we are going to have a dog in the fight, I just think this one's premature.
Madam Chair, could I respond to Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead.
You know, Commissioner Gibbon, I think you do bring up a good point because if the discovery process is allowed to go through, we will get some of those answers. What I'm concerned about here is the politic, so there's two tracks. There's the legal track, and then there's the political track over here. What I'm concerned about is the political track, there's no transparency in that process. Or as much transparency as what the folks who are here in front of us today would like to have. So we may never get those answers, and so we have to ask now. Because if we don't ask now, we may actually just waive or forego the opportunity to even get any answers. Because this is the opportunity to compel those answers to happen. Now, the judge may not side with us, but that's neither here nor there. We at least have to ask. Otherwise, I'm afraid we waive the ability to get those answers. So that would be my point of view. And I've litigated these issues against government before. I explained that to the NOPE Committee, too. You know, I represented my neighborhood in the lawsuit with Walmart at 85th Street. I represented Save Spellerburg Park with the city of Sioux Falls, so very familiar with these types of lawsuits. And usually, the way to get answers is you file suit and then you, then you serve discovery, and usually you get some answers from the decision makers after you compel them in a court of law. I would like to say this, because I don't want this to go by the wayside. You know, I certainly hope that in a very constructive collaborative way that the neighbors and the NOPE group not only pursue the legal side of things, I also hope they pursue the, the political side of things with our elected leaders. Very similar to what the, the Spring Creek group did as well. You know, they went and lobbied the legislature, they went and lobbied Game Fish and Parks, and they lobbied, ultimately, they lobbied the governor herself. And they got what I believe is an amicable resolution out there. So I certainly urge and encourage the NOPE group to also, hopefully, identify an alternative course of action for the state to take and then rally, drive consensus towards that, and then rally support for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've served on planning and zoning for more years than I probably can count. And I've tried to take every application that was been in front of us, and eventually, if it was a zoning in front of the commission, for consideration equally. And listen to both sides and then make a decision. Why I am somewhat concerned about, Madam Chair, and hopefully you can answer it, is if we don't take this action today, and that you referred to not the appropriate time, when does the system allow us to ask the questions that, that I think are pertinent to what they're proposing out there?
I'm going to defer to legal counsel on that.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
If not, on this action, is there an alternative timeframe or an action that the county could take to ask the courts if the state's not willing to come in front of us or feel that they don't require? Alternatively, because again, they haven't broke ground, they haven't presented anything. I am trying to stay as neutral as I can, even though there's been a lot of talk already ahead of this presentation, because we are the jury if it is a planning and zoning decision. So my question is, if, if I don't support this today, when do I get a chance to ask the state to come in front of us? to come in front of us?
I don't think there would be an opportunity for us to ask, or, or to litigate that on our own independently.
Thank you.
Is the, is the brief that was filed, did it address the question itself, on whether they need to follow our zoning, or was it just the initial standing questions?
Excuse me for interrupting. The initial pleading by, by NOPE sought injunctive relief for the state to either follow the comprehensive plan and seek a conditional use permit, or rezone the land. So that was the ultimate declaratory judgment they were seeking.
And did their brief address that issue, though?
Yeah.
That they filed? Because I was, when I was reading it, I thought it was just those initial questions, on whether their complaint was sufficient, and...
Yeah, there's that initial question, and they'd have to withstand the now motion dismissed to move on to the discovery process, to fully vet those claims.
And that's paragraph S., page 25 of their complaint, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion, next, Commissioners?
Well, I think, Madam Chair, if it would be appropriate now, just consistent with our policy, is, is allow people to have some comments on this.
No, and I was going to do that, actually. You kind of jumped ahead of me with your motion, but I am going to circle back and allow some public comment on this. I just wanted to give all the Commissioners a chance to speak, if they'd like to. Commissioner Schmidt, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Well, I wish I was able to attend the meeting. I have remained silent for a purpose. I struggle with this issue a great deal, because I certainly understand those individuals who are, you know, within a close proximity to this proposed prison situation. On the other hand, I look at it from a legal standpoint, and what I'm struggling with here is not the emotional side, or not the political side, because it's easy to be popular to, on issues like this. However, if we are, what we are saying in so many words is that we want the state to subjugate themselves to have to follow what the guidelines of a county comprehensive plan says, or to get a conditional use permit. So are we setting a stage, then, that regardless of where the state would go, whether it was Union County, Clay County, whatever county, that they would have to have that kind of permission? And I doubt sincerely if they were to go to any other county besides Lakin, they would run into the same situation that they have here. We have a NIMBY effect, not in my backyard. I understand that, and I'm not, I mean, people are probably going to get very upset, but so be it. But I'm asking the question, in the long run, will the state really advocate its ability to put a prison, or do something that they have to provide for public safety, in the hands of a county? And I'd like, I'd like to have that answered. I mean, do you think the state will, will go along with that? I mean, are we kidding ourselves? Are we trying to do something? I understand all of the emotion, the amount of people and emails that I have had, my goodness, that has been on, this has been the most I think I've ever had. So, that's my question, and when I struggle with this thing, if you say yes to this thing, will it be good? Will it make people feel good? Will it do that kind of stuff? Probably. But will it change, in the long run, will it change the ultimate outcome? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything you wanted to add, Commissioner Gibbon?
No, thank you.
All right. I'm sure there'll be other comment here, but I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment, since it is on our regular agenda. So, individuals will have three minutes to speak, at a maximum. Comments can only relate to this agenda item under consideration. And if there's a substantial number of people who are willing to speak, if somebody would let me know that, I mean, use the three minutes, it might, if you have a spokesperson, I will, I mean, allow a half hour total for both opponents or proponents. So we'll just set the timer at the regular 30 minutes, I think that's the best way to do it, that's worked in the past. So keep your comments, remain to the agenda item, and everybody be respectful and polite, and we shouldn't have any problems with that. So, with that, I will open it up, and if somebody wants to come up and speak.
Good morning. Kaya Broders, Canton, South Dakota. Just a couple of clarifications that I would like to provide to Commissioner Landin. First off, I am the President of NOPE. I am joined by Vice President Madeline Vogelai, Secretary Michelle Jensen, also board member, Reed Van Der Veen, he's essentially Head of Marketing, also board member, Jay White, Treasurer, also a board member, Sam Eastland, Tom Eastland, and Mike Hoffman make up the rest of our board. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
The other clarification I'd like to provide, and I apologize if I need to speak a little bit like an auctioneer, I do have another gentleman's note that I would like to read as well. The GoFundMe is not asking to, it's helping to prevent small, young families that are incredibly impacted by this piece. There obviously are legal pieces that we are having to incur, and whatever is not taken care of will obviously fall on the board members, as well as the members of NOPE. A clarification on that, we do have over 100 official members. I appreciate the clarification on not listing the number of Facebook people as well. Please do note that in the two forums we have had, we've had attendance over 250 people. And then I do have a list of people as well, that were unable to be here being at 8:30, well, no, 20 after 10 on a Tuesday morning. My letter reads as, "When I stop and reflect on the issue of the men's penitentiary in rural Lincoln County, I cannot help but consider the topics of this magnitude need to be made by elected officials with the input of people of the state. An appointed bureaucrat with less than two years of being a South Dakota resident should not have the ultimate power to disrupt years of work completed by the county commissioners and citizens of Lincoln County without the slightest hint of transparency. I urge your support for an amicus brief that will aid in the enforcement of zoning laws for, for the state penitentiary in South Dakota. It is crucial that we address the issue to ensure the fair and responsible use of land in our county. This blatant disregard for the zoning process has brought forth a plethora of concerns and potential adverse effects in the surrounding communities. This violation of zoning regulation undermines the trust of local residents and threatens the integrity of our county's planning and zoning process. Attending and viewing county commission meetings has revealed a portion of this process of balancing of interests to myself. I have witnessed and seen small, excuse me, small print here, small family developments and event spaces voted down with statements following the decisions to the tune of, 'It isn't the right time.' I will state, this is not the right time nor place for the men's penitentiary in rural Lincoln County. Bringing a development as large as this will drastically change the lives of citizens, lives and citizens of Lincoln County. Funds meant for the betterment of the county will now have to be spent on the defense of the indigent, follow our violent defenders. As mentioned last week at our forum by Commissioner Ehrens, $50,000 to $100,000 would indeed pay for an additional deputy, or possibly provide more money for the deputies we do currently employ. Our emergency services will be taxed to provide services to an additional 1,500 non-taxpaying citizens. Gravel roads will soon be destroyed by heavy machinery, forcing the surrounding community and townships to endure the damage while waiting for the paved roads that will bring in hurried workers, visitors, inmate intake, and 18-wheelers filled with supplies. My peace of mind in allowing my young boys, who I'm hoping are behaving themselves right now, will drastically change. Our yard will now be fenced, and will need more caution than ever before to assure their safety. Not to lay prejudice against those whom visit the prison, but some may attempt to support the addictions of their friends and family, and may try their hardest to feed the despirations of the incarcerated by hiding drugs and paraphernalia in nearby outbuildings, ditches, and tree-lined fields. Our ability to enjoy the beauty and wonder of the night sky will be replaced with the glare of illuminated concrete and steel. The peace and serenity of country living, which I and my neighbors paid a premium price for, will now be open season for heavy industrial purchase. I will never again be able to find or replace my land, or my house, that my family has called home for the last seven years, without an even more significant investment. The lack of infrastructure has been brought before this Board since my very first appearance and speaking to this Board, and it should not be passed over. Depending on the deal the state is able to strike, if any, with surrounding communities, it would require miles of easements for an unwanted project in this county. If they are able to tie in, if they are unable to tie into an existing water treatment facility, a large portion of the 160 acres of arable land will now be filled with sewage, that, pun intended, will wreak havoc during spring months for miles around. By supporting the amicus brief, we can stand in favor of holding the sovereignty to the same laws we require the people it governs to obey. The amicus brief will serve as a powerful legal tool to underscore the importance of enforcing zoning laws, and that the state penitentiary operates within the established I will demonstrate our county's, it will demonstrate our county's commitment to preserving the well-being and quality and life of our residents. Furthermore, the amicus brief will provide legal support to concerned citizens who seek transparency in and from their elected officials. Your decision will have a significant impact for generations to come. A vote against this briefing is surrendering the voice of the people to the sovereignty as the state proclaims themselves in the motion to dismiss our lawsuit, and turning a blind eye to the people that elected you as county commissioners and state's attorneys. Thank you for your continued attention to this urgent matter. I trust that you will carefully consider the voices of your constituents when deciding to support a motion for an amicus brief, to be in support of the residents of Lincoln County and members of NOPE, Lincoln County. Additional people that have reached out to me are included, but are not limited to Danny Bliss, Josh and Bianca Johnson, I'll be reading Josh's term, or letter here shortly, Kathy Kloski, Sarah Ulmer, Cole Walters, Kelly Brack, Pam Gurkin Espeland, Doug Bezug, Amy Schultz, Lori Fossom, Milo Fogarty, Jerry and Sherry Swanson. Now to move into Josh Johnson, his letter. Dear Commissioners, my name is Joshua Johnson. I reside at 47542, 277th Street, approximately 1.5 miles from the proposed site. My wife and I purchased our land a few years ago, and have since built a home and outbuildings in pursuit of our dream of raising a family on a hobby farm. It has been a significant investment for us, and like many of our neighbors, we have concerns, not only about the, how the penitentiary itself may impact the area, but also future development. How will the area shift? Commercial? Heavy industry? High-density or multifamily residential, so-called halfway houses? And what impact will this have on my hobby farm and quality of life? The state contends that they own the land, and under real or implied statutes of sovereignty and eminent domain authority can do as they please without being subject to local planning and zoning. While the state may not be directly depriving any individual citizen of property, I believe that a project of such magnitude, 150 inmate facility on 320 acres, with plans for future expansion, essentially erecting a small town with enormous potential for impact on the county and local municipalities, as well as neighboring residents and landowners, should still be afforded some sort of procedural due process, including alleviation of concerns raised by citizens, collaboration with local authorities, and equitable treatment of potentially impacted subdivisions. This is well outlined in the American Correctional Association's publication, Design Guide for Secure Adult Facilities, which is accessible on the U.S. Department of Justice website. The following is taken directly from this publication. The correctional authority should coordinate correctional planning with local planning agencies to ensure that potential sites will be serviced by all necessary utilities and roads, and will conform to established planning policy. Local planning agencies can be a valuable source of information for selecting sites. Later, regarding eminent domain authority of publication states, it is recommended that this power not be exercised whenever there is significant community opposition. It is normally better to work with the community leadership and zoning authorities to obtain a permit. If proper political and community climate is developed, obtaining a special permit is seldom a problem, and the harmonious relationship established with the community will pay dividends in the future. As for equitable treatment of political subdivisions, the Sioux Falls mayor has been open about the desire to move the penitentiary out of Sioux Falls. There is also some evidence of formal correspondence between the state and Sioux Falls Hartford Municipal and Minnehaha County leadership regarding potential prison sites. These local government entities were seemingly given an opportunity to weigh in. They pushed back, and the state pivoted to the current location. Should Lincoln County not be given similar weight regarding site selection? If the state were erecting a new highway or some other large-scale infrastructure project, they would not be able to approach select few impacted landowners regarding the path of project and easement terms, while leaving others in the dark. This would be a violation of procedural due process. I respectfully request the county commissioners' support to the current litigation brought forward by NOPE, Lincoln County, seeking procedural due process in prison site selection and planning, specifically, collaboration with county planning and zoning, to identify the best possible site, such that infrastructure scaling and maintenance costs, as well as impact to local residents and future municipal development, be minimized. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and speak in support of the motion?
Morning.
Good morning.
Jessica Beckma, live at 27671, South Dakota Highway 11. Purchased my property two years ago, and spent every waking hour building my house personally by myself. I've spent my life savings on it, and I've spent my time building it for my family. I want to specifically comment to Commissioner Schmidt's comment of NIMBY, better known as not in my backyard. I will admit, at first, that was my feeling. Until I really got involved, because I'm not a political person, I'm not a vocal person to stand up in the committee, in the community. This was probably my first time in doing that. To that comment, yes, that was our first initial response, but this is way far more than that. It has grown into what we found out to be, in my, in my opinion, as government overreach. We, the people, have the say, not the state. We elect the state to, to represent us. We don't elect the state to walk over us. And that's what they're doing. If we don't stand up now, this will happen to other communities. Are we to give our government just an overruled thumb to slam us down anytime that they want to? No. We elected it. We have a say. And if you guys don't support this, you give our say away.
Quickly, hi Jim, how are you today?
Good. Hi.
Hi, Jim. We're sending our love to you and Terry. Good to see you. My name is Madeline Vogelai.
It is not...
Go for it, buddy.
I was just going to say, it's, it's difficult to sit here and listen. It's equally difficult to, if I'm, if I'm, if there's a lapse, I have to tell you right now, Madam Chair, I may have to run and assist my wife, who is recovering from surgery, but I will try to write, be back as quickly as I can.
Understood.
Our thoughts to you and Terry as well. Good morning, Commission. Madam Chair, one quick thing, I believe today is the day to make your decision. Thank you for allocating time in your agenda today to address the important topic currently taking place in Lincoln County, surrounding the decision made by the state of South Dakota to build a new state penitentiary in your jurisdiction. While I understand that you all represent various constituencies within Lincoln County, it is paramount to recall that your position is an elected one, one by the people and for the people. The state of South Dakota has chosen to circumvent your comprehensive plans for a purposeful, orderly, and appropriate growth for one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation. Assigning a parcel of land in rural Lincoln County is not so suddenly negating the hard work and decisions you have collectively made as a county board, not to mention a planning and zoning board as well. The work that the county board has done... The work that the county board has done to meaningfully develop Lincoln County spans decades by those who have served before you, alongside you, and with you here today. The state of South Dakota has chosen to negate due process by making a decision on where to place a new state penitentiary without your consent. Our family resides on a modest homestead. It's nestled into a hill overlooking Beaver Creek. Here, you'll see pheasants flutter by, hear the laughter of our two daughters, Whitley and Pearl, as they catch yet another creek chub, and see our baby Sunbirdal smile with glee as he watches his two dogs play and run freely by. As a lifelong resident of Lincoln County, this tranquil acreage is everything I've ever dreamt of and the only way that my husband Tim and I wish to raise our children. The decision by the state of South Dakota to disrupt the way of life for our family as well as the entirety of Lincoln County came as a disheartening shock. I am asking you, as elected officials, to support an amicus brief that will comprehensively examine the state's role in your planning and zoning process. By not supporting this brief, it is effectively setting a precedent that showcases a disregard for decisions made by our county's elected officials as well as the voices of their constituents. A vote against this brief highlights an opportunity for the state to make decisions lacking regard for any county's planning and zoning ordinances, growth plans, or decisions made by the county board. This would have not only a rippling but crippling effect on all counties within South Dakota. Supporting this brief today is also imperative for NOPE, Lincoln County. This collection of concerned South Dakotans evolved into an organization that has taken a fair and objective look at the state's decision to build a new state penitentiary in Lincoln County. In doing so, many significant problems have come to light. We, as an organization, have been able to address these harrowing issues in meetings, online, and at public forums. Here, we have showcased concerns aside from ignoring your voices, voices that were elected specifically by your constituents yet ignored by the states. These poignant concerns contain but aren't limited to: lack of infrastructure, no public plan for a proper wastewater treatment system, a disregard for citizen safety, a lack of medical and law enforcement personnel within our county, a negative community and economic impact, and a lack of public arrangements for a workforce at this proposed location. Moreover, this decision was made in a manner that nullified due process and eclipsed your ability to govern your own constituents. We are asking that you support this amicus brief and allow the government to operate as it was meant to be with transparency, accountability, and shared decision-making. Please vote yes as you choose to address the challenges at hand, not only for NOPE, Lincoln County, but for all residents of Lincoln County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak this morning?
Yes, good morning. Michelle Jensen, Canton, South Dakota. I just wanted to address a couple of the questions and points that were raised earlier during your discussion, Madam Chair. So, when you were discussing potentially delaying this decision, there is a court date coming up in January, and so by delaying this decision, you probably may not get another chance at it. So I wanted to address that.
Thank you.
There was also some comment about spending the taxpayers' money. We are some of your taxpayers, so I wanted to point that out as well. There actually are quite a few of us in the NOPE organization and coming to these meetings. And also wanted to point it out, when Commissioner Aaron's was speaking, and potentially that the county cannot raise something against the state, that this is going to be your chance to at least get behind it and try to get some more answers, which is going to take me down to the comment that Commissioner Schmidt had. And so, if we would like more information on this, and he talked a lot about the legalities of it, I do believe a lot of that is going to need to be decided in the courts. So this is our chance to try and get some kind of answers, and so we are asking for your support of this amicus brief. You also mentioned House Bill 1017 that some of the legislators of Lincoln County voted for. But if I'm correct, I believe in that legislation, it was more than appropriation of funds. I don't believe that they were aware that this was going to be, you know, placed in Lincoln County without any type of regard for the comprehensive plan that you have in place, which takes me to, one of our attorneys for NOPE is A.J. Swanson, and A.J. Swanson was involved in helping write the county comprehensive plan. And so, he feels very strongly and puts it in a lovely 25-page document of why this should be heard in the courts so we can get some kind of a decision on that. So I think those were a lot of the things that were brought up that I just wanted to address this morning, and please ask for your support on this amicus brief. Thank you.
Any other speakers this morning?
My name is Mary Garrett, Canton, South Dakota. I live at 27836-476th Avenue, and I am one of the many people in Lincoln County to be affected by the building of a new state penitentiary on the site located at the corners of 278th Street and 477th. My mom and I are less than four tenths of a mile from the proposed site. I have lived on our acreage off and on per my parents' divorce for 30 years, the entirety of my life. This is one of the few things my dad had to leave my brother and I, and he always called it his peace and serenity, the place where he felt in communion with God. I'm third generation on this land, and I had hoped to get married and raise my children here. I'm asking you to please support us on this cause. I have done so much research, in fact, I've exhausted myself every evening since the beginning of October when I learned about the DOC's plan, emailing, researching, taking notes, writing out letters, et cetera, but I won't stop, and I cannot stop, not until somebody takes us seriously, not until something is done to show how wrong what the DOC is doing to the people of the state of South Dakota, but specifically to the people of Lincoln County. We should be able to see what's being done and where. We should be able to see why they chose this spot. We should have access to public documents. We are meant to have a say in our own area and county, that's why we have planning and zoning, and that's why we have county commissioners. Where is the transparency of government? Why can the South Dakota Department of Corrections not be subjected to the same rules and laws as every other state entity? I've heard what is being said about the NOPE organization, how we are NIMBYs and simply don't want the penitentiary in our backyards, and perhaps there is some truth in that. No, we don't want it there, but it's for more than just our selfish reasons. We have looked into all of the outcomes of housing a state penitentiary. We've looked into provisional and actual county budgets, looked into the input of county penitentiary, looked into the input of penitentiary costs that are paid for by county residents' property taxes. We've looked into economic growth, agricultural harms, environmental harms, sociological harms, emergency response issues, et cetera. If you can think of it, we've looked into it. Any of us would be happy to share our research with you if you'd like. If you've attended any of our public forums or any of our meetings, you'd know that we have done all of the research necessary. That is why I'm begging you to continue to be our voice. Please help us, stand with us. We are sickened by the state and DOC's lack of transparency. We are sickened by the absolute lack of transparency the state government has shown all of us. Honestly, I don't think many of us even knew this was a considered site, and if we had, I guarantee we would have gotten involved a lot sooner in assisting in the process of finding a good site for the new penitentiary. We know that we will and continue to have growth in our area. We all are expecting it. I see people put houses up every single day. The issue the county people all have is that this is not something that's going to help our community in the least. We have a list of reasons for not wanting it here, but to quote Ms. Wasco back in February when she was discussing placement, "The location probably wouldn't be the primary selling point for employees." So I would really like someone to tell me why that's the primary selling point now. If they want easier access to the interstate, then they can build it by the interstate. If they don't want it in Sioux Falls, don't put it in Sioux Falls. There are plenty of people who I'm sure would take $25,000 per acre for their land or would gladly swap with the DOC. This land is prime agricultural land. It has produced more in my 30 years of life than a state penitentiary ever could. It has created memories and crops for hundreds of people, and it has supported families. I just don't understand why they think this spot is a good idea when it lacks nearly every piece of infrastructure necessary and is a prime spot of agricultural land. I don't understand why they would think that the fastest-growing county in the state would just go along with it. You all are our voices. We need you to speak and be heard by the state for us. I've emailed and spoken with countless representatives, but I'm asking you to please be my voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. Mike Hoffman, Canton, South Dakota. Wasn't going to speak, but we sat with other agenda items this morning of budget items, numerous of those. This, and you call it misappropriation of funds or whatever you want to call it, government overreach, it's a large, large, large number, and we can't even get an answer on what that large number is. We're asking for help to get that budget item figured out. You know, you guys can't run a budget, I can't run a budget without having all the information. We're asking for your help to, help us get the information of site location, dollar amount, impact to the community. I could come to Lincoln County to get a building permit for a storage shed, and I'd have to go through far more than the state is going to have to do to this. What's the impact going to be on our community long-term? It's the site location is kind of in the weeds of what we're talking about right now, but we're asking for that information so we can all gather that at this point. Thank you.
What I'd like to hear is anybody's conversations with their legislators. Is there any draft legislation that's going up to maybe fix this within our statutes? I don't know if there's a fix, but is somebody working on that?
We have been working very closely with Representatives Jensen as well as Lemms in regards to what this process will look like going forward to essentially piggyback on what Commissioner Aaron's had stated of having alternative plans. We have also been working with other representatives such as Representative Aaron Alaward out of Harrisburg, and perhaps others behind me can speak a little more clearly on reaching other representatives as well as senators in the area. However, they have been less involved and communicative with us.
What are they telling you about the discussions about location? Because, I mean, if I'm looking at these, you know, do pass, I think Lemms and Jensen both voted for this. So I'm just wondering what those, you know, have they spoken to you about how this decision was made, and even looking at Lincoln County, and did they know that? That would be a question that I would like answered.
I can't provide a specific clarification on that aspect right now. I can tell you that especially when speaking with Representative Jensen and Lemms, to Commissioner Aaron's point as well, it was more of an appropriations piece of it rather than the location.
That was part of it, but it was also to purchase property.
And I understand that, and when speaking with Representative Alaward, he did discern that in his vote, and his vote was no. So yes, I do think that a deeper dive needs to be taken from a legislative aspect, circling back as well when we talk about funds. Lobbying and working with the governor is not going to come freely. It is definitely going to take even more of our time as well as investments, which, to point out once more, is small families, generational farmers. This is not something to be taken lightly.
Thank you for that. Commissioners, anybody have any other questions they'd like to ask? Any other discussion? Is there, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there a way to be neutral in, you know, putting in the motion for an amicus brief, or you have to take a side, don't you? And if you do file an amicus brief, does that allow you to obtain discovery materials if they allow you to file?
To answer your first question, I think there's a way that we can draft it that's supportive but yet neutral, that the issues are ripe for judicial review. To answer your second question, no, I don't believe we've been entitled to the discovery portion of it, but that would be the NOPE organization in their litigation.
So we wouldn't necessarily be able to, it wouldn't allow us to get the answers that we're looking for?
Correct.
Are you done with public comment?
I am, actually. It just ran out, the half hour, but if you want to speak and be briefed, then I will allow that.
I've just got a short thing here. Scott Langford, I refer you. Right now, the present president is on about 44 acres, and they only occupy a small part of that land with buildings. They own about a patch, well, the state owns a side of 24 acres right next to that, and the Board of Corrections owns 28 acres right north of that across the, I think it would be the channel of Big Sioux River. So there's land there that they could utilize. The Jameson is staying there. They're going to keep using that, and I think it's just craziness that they don't occupy or use the land they've got instead of coming out here where we don't want them. It's there now, so I think we ought to pressure those people into using the land that they already own. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak against the motion that's been made? All right. If not, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion amongst the commission?
Madam Chair, I don't want to interrupt the individuals that have brought it in front of the commission. We'd yield to them first if they had a something, but...
No, go ahead.
This obviously is not an easy decision because I think we do have to stay neutral because I believe that he needs to come in front of us. The point that I want to make is, as was disclosed by our council, we don't have an alternative other than to do this, and I do think it's imperative of the state. And I think it's imperative legislators to take action that they see what has happened by this and pass legislation, that they don't do this to somebody else for whatever reason. I think they should have to abide by local zoning requirements. They've passed legislation trying to eliminate them from being sued or have to follow that. I think that's inappropriate. So I think not only the residents here in Lincoln County throughout the state should take a hard look to their own representatives and say, "Hey, we don't want this to happen no matter what it is in our backyard." Please pass legislation that they have to, at a minimum, present what it is that they want to do and abide by the local zoning laws that exist in those counties for whatever reason that they're trying to take action. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Call the question, Madam Chair.
All right. With that, I will call the wall, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Landin?
I'm going to vote no, and I'm going to vote no just because the motion is to support a certain position. But with that said, it passes anyway, so I'm going to no.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming in and sharing everything with us today. Appreciate it. And then we have to circle back to our Consent Agenda 809. And that was Toby. Was he going to present on that?
He's in the hallway, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Toby.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The saying before you this morning is the annual contract with the GUT Plan and Co. Consulting. This annual agreement allows us to use them as a supplemental resource when we're doing billing plan reviews for commercial projects. So the volume that we're experiencing is pretty heavy. This just allows us to utilize this resource and for them to expedite... This just allows us to utilize this resource and for them to expedite some of the projects that we have, so we can approve building permits quicker. Generally, the contract is less than what it would be for a full-time FTE. Primarily, we probably could use a full FTE to do additional code review, but with the expertise and the experience that this individual has, it's a resource that we couldn't really staff in our office. I would say that Harrisburg and Tia and the city of Sioux Falls use the same consultant for supplemental resources as well. So, if I have to answer your questions, you can have her staff.
So, when I read this, so what are they actually doing? Like, what is this for? Because how is this not just something that's being done within your own office, I guess is my main question?
Yeah, great question. So what they're utilized for is for if we need, if we have an abundance of applications, we utilize them to review the building permit plans, primarily for just commercial projects, and so it just expedites the process that we have.
How much do we spend with them on an annual basis?
Yeah, great question. So they're 20% of what the actual issued building permit would be. I don't have an exact breakdown of what it is now, but what I would say is this year's a little abnormal, because we did have four large projects in the county that were over $40 million, and so we did utilize them for those services. But again, I would say that when we look at it, it's less than what a full-time FTE would be in our office.
It is less than a full-time. Okay, that was, okay, that was what I wanted to know.
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
Toby, good morning. Is not every application is going to go through this process, correct? Or are you saying that every application's going to go through this review process?
No, just the commercial projects that we need resources for go through it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Toby, do the, do the fees that we collect on a commercial application get used to pay for the service?
Yes.
So basically, the applicant, this is a pass-through from the applicant?
Yes.
To pay for the service?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That answers my questions. Anybody have any others? All right, is there any public comment on this agenda item? All right, if not, I would consider a motion, please.
Move to approve.
I will second the motion.
Got a motion and a second from, motion from Aaron, second from Poppins. If there's no further discussion, Kristen, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Then I, we don't need another executive session, do we? Okay, then I just need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody.